Public Safety, so that's Police Dispatch and then as fire feeds into that communication system. And it involves three components and then a 3A. The three major components of that are the new antenna that would go up, the other one are improvements to our dispatch center, and then improvements to radios, both the radios that officers wear and their mobile. And then as part of dispatch, there's also an upgrade that we had kind of planned before and have some funds in our budget already, which is a computer-aided dispatch. We'll talk a little bit about that this evening. But the big challenge was is that we said that we want to upgrade because we want to maintain our standing with a, an area-wide, metro-wide really, 800, 900 megahertz system that allows our officers to interact, to have instant communication with other police and fire units, and in the case of a disaster to be able to, particularly for disasters, but to be able to talk to other people as they come in from around the state. We're the only one at this point that are on this 800, 900 megahertz system. The rest of the county has a slightly different system, and as we need to, we can talk about that. So the first one is that, so, and what my idea on this one is that I'll carry the first part of the communication, and then because the next part is really dealing with the budget, and so I'm the budget officer, but all the work gets done by Matt and the rest of the department directors. So he'll carry that conversation. So the first one will be dealing with a 3.5 million upgrade. And then the second one is really the carryover from the end of last year, that we're spending more than we're bringing in. And what is a plan to close that gap? And that all of our plans, and we'll have that tonight as we go through in the written materials, that we look at a five-year horizon, so that any kinds of changes we make, that we try to level them out to make the least impact on both staff and the public in terms of revenues and expenditures. So, Public Safety. Those are the components, and that's all. So now we go, do you have the next one to call? Okay. So the funding with this, some of this is old information or theoretically, and I'll give you updates as we go. So we're trying to close the gap of 3.1 million. And the people that, the funding this, obviously, the primary responsibility is the city. It's our upgrade. But we have some partners, and a very major one in TVFNR. So of the 3.1 million dollars, we're, we have asked, I'll skip to the second paragraph at that, we've asked Twelton Fire and Rescue to come up with 1.7 of the 3.1 million. Okay? So that would then leave us with coming up with 1.4 million. Now, we're going to talk about what's the likelihood and what's the plan for that as we go along. So in funding the 1.4 million, the strategy is, or what's proposed to you, is selling off, and we don't have much, but selling off property that we have and/or other assets. And so there's two that are being proposed to get appraisals for, and then put it out for bid, and to sell it. The first one is the Butler property. So most people know which one it is, but that's the property that's directly across from City Hall where the farmer's market is. And we have, just in talking for economic development purposes, we've been talking about that property. We've done an analysis, part of the downtown, the economic development plan, and which one, downtown improvement plan, where Doug and Community Developments have brought back, and we've had a pretty extensive conversation about the feasibility of what could go there and looking at different alternatives. And up until about maybe a year ago, it was just, well, our property value in the downtown maybe suggested this wasn't the right time. We weren't going to get the right kind of funds that we want. Well, things have changed and things have heated up enough to the point where we have one solid and one pretty serious interest in saying, okay, we would like to buy that property and develop it according to the current zoning, and so we'd like to know what the price is. So we asked the Council for Authority to get an appraisal. That's going on right now, of getting appraisal ordered, and then we will bring that back to you so that you can consider what the offer is. So very public. Generally, don't bring you something like a piece of property unless someone else has said we have a strong interest. So that's working now, and hopefully, within the next 60 days, we will have an appraisal with dollar amounts on there. So what's the range? What do you think it might go? Just looking at other properties, and this is really a swag, we have several properties in the downtown that are similar in use and size, could be, and we'll recommend setting a minimum bid on something, but could be as low as 300,000 up to, what, maybe 500, 600,000 for a property, or if we get into a bidding war, it might be higher. That's based on things like the Leaf Gas Station on the old PGE building, and then there's two lots next to the Mexican Restaurant. So we think we're in that kind of a range. The second one is the animal shelter. And I know there's some people, when they come into the open session, would like to talk to you about that, but just, and I think all of you remember with maybe the exception of Counselor Murray, that the city responding to a community fundraising effort to take care of our dogs and cats in town, we went from a small shelter that was there by Ewing Young Park to build a facility off of Sandoz. And it's been completed, it's being operated by a nonprofit group, and what my recommendation to you is to get an appraisal and put that out for sale, with the caveat that my recommendation to you would be not to just sell it for the value of the property, or just because we want money to come in, pay for communications upgrade, which we need to, but that it would be advertised and sold to another, to a group, it can be the existing one, but someone that you go through a vetting process that would continue to operate that building to help as an animal shelter. So that makes, that's a little bit different than other properties sometimes when you put it out, but my recommendation for you will be to that. Now, why I'm bringing to you at this time is that probably five, six months ago, when we were looking at the budget back in June, I knew that the animal shelter was coming up for a renewal, and that there are competing interests for providing animal services in town, and they wanted to bid on operation of the center, assuming at that point that it was still under city ownership. So I knew that, one way or the other, was going to recommend to you to put it out for bid for the next round. Well, then, as we look at the need for the communication upgrade and the fact that we, the first preference is not to go back to the voters for getting additional money for communication, that's always an option, but the first one was to look at property that we might surplus and sell. Well, then the animal shelter became a logical, because we have very few properties, but a logical alternative. So I contacted the Board Chair of the existing shelter, that's Krista Everly, and said, I would like, I'm going to go down the road of recommending to Council to sell this with the funds going to communication and with the recommendation, and of course, Council, you decide that, but with the recommendation that it always remains as an animal shelter. So, okay, yes.
Can we de-restrict it that way? Is that something you can do? Thank you.
Okay. So they have said, okay, tell us what the price is. Now, on the animal shelter, there's also was a very substantial donations and contributions by the public to the shelter. So after we get the appraisal, and what we're doing now is we've been collecting information from the animal shelter, the current of the kinds of improvements they made, then going back, and we've recorded how much donation came in to build it, and then how much of city, other funds. And there's a couple of funds within the city. It's not all general fund that contributed to the shelter waterfront and wastewater and the property that sits on. So we'll bring all that back, and it is very appropriate of what we would recommend, is honoring the donations that have already been contributed. So you'll see that soon, what we have in the city manager's account, I have a, I think it's a professional services line item, so there's sufficient money in there, and the Authority should give me under the budget to go order an appraisal. So I've asked Doug, as he's getting the appraisal for the Butler property, also to ask to have appraisal on that. So hopefully, we're in the same 60 days. And it's those two funds that our goal is ideally is to make up the, you know, 1,004. Now, the Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, much of their, they recognize that in order to run a medical and fire service here, they need these same upgrades to their equipment. They're already a part of all of their TVFNR boundary they're in with the WAC, the Washington Consolidated Dispatch, and they want to continue that here. So they know they have some responsibility to antenna and upgrades, not necessarily to our radios that our officers will carry. So the proposal that, and the Chief Dyke, in just meeting with the Subcommittee of the Board, which would be the Board Chair and one other member, we've said that I'd like you to come up with this 1 point, approximately 1.7 million. And the way of doing that will be a proposal to sell our fire equipment. Now, they would like us to actually do it, but they've offered to use the expertise of Chief Holman to work with us, and not just put it out to a broker where we pay a fee and maybe get 25 cents on a dollar, which is a pretty much industry standard when you're selling surplus equipment, but us to go to individual, you know, fire departments that have these kinds of existing equipment and to try to negotiate a price. All the public process we'll bring back. The mayor has asked that we consider doing a auction-type for some of the equipment. So during this, after tonight, depending on where you go, if there's any guidance you have, our plan is that during this week, we start setting up the meetings with Chief Holman to start the process. The annexation has made it through its first hurdle, which is a public hearing last Tuesday night. They have one more in another week with Washington County. Then there'll be a decision of whether they vote, whether they call for a vote, or whether they're going to do it at the commission level, all saying that it's to be implemented July 1 of next year. But this portion of the sale of equipment, our goal is to start this right away. Now, as part of that, but not really part of the communication upgrade, but because questions come up, is that under the discussions right now, and this, this will all be memorialized in an agreement that Finance and me and the city attorney will bring to you a draft agreement of the terms of annexation that will deal with a lot of things, like the sale or gifting, if you want to say, transfer of equipment, how do we deal with personnel actions, how do we deal with accrued benefit leave and vacation leaves of our firefighters, but it also includes two fire stations. And what my recommendation to you will be that the Spring Brook Station would be transferred at no cost to the fire district, and potentially an adjoining additional lot, where that might be useful if we have shortfalls in any of the sales equipment, and that we would retain the downtown station, but that both of the stations would continue to operate as fire stations, which is what they're interested in, and the downtown would continue to be as a fire station for a dollar a year as long as they need it. But the goal of retaining that one, which is slightly different than what, and there's only been two major annexations into TVFNR of cities, and that's Beaverton and Westland. In Westland, the majority of their equipment was given without any compensation. There was some agreements on the downtown area of transfers of their property. They had multiple stations with an understanding that a new station would be built there, and part of the ideas with the proceeds. So that's slightly different than what we had, but the, in that one, it's, we'll give you the stations and the property, UTVFR will put in equipment. Now, as it's turned out, that was six years ago, almost seven years ago, at least, I believe, two of the properties that they did not need have now come back to the city of Westland, and they're using them for other purposes. So there's more to be dealt with there. The Dundee Fire is a placeholder, so Dundee Police is part of our police contract, and we just treat them as, there's no difference between Newburgh and Dundee Police. Dundee Fire is a separate agency. They have to make a lot of decisions about what their future is, and some of their decisions can very well be, do they wish to align themselves with the forfeit, the other, the alternative communication system in Yam Hill County, or do they wish to have some alignment with TBR or directly with WACA? We're still in that discussion. And so the question was, if they utilize this antenna for their system, is there something that is appropriate to ask them to pay? And right now, we're working on numbers, we're looking at alternatives, we're talking to Dundee Fire, so I don't have a specific proposal, but likely could be on the basis of something like the number of radios that they have that would directly utilize that antenna. And the final one is, we will look for all kinds of things, is that Mary Newell and the Police Department annually seeks funding from Homeland Security, and so we're looking to see if some part of the grant system could pay for a portion of our communications upgrade. And more to come well before we get to next year. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll move to the budget.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of developing the model with Caleb and Dan, and this is your first stab at it. We kind of briefly revealed it back in April when we did the budget, but this is the kind of thing that we have the pleasure of being able to do, is run scenarios. I'm going to present six that Joe brought to me and said, hey, this is just some of the proposals I want to have you run to help answer some of the questions regarding both the combined communications, public safety communications upgrade, and the budget structural deficit. So both of the challenges that were addressed on that first slide are built into these scenarios, okay? So if you're viewing it at, if you're viewing from the packet, you will have a full eight and a half, 11 page. I've broken up each page into three different slides. So if you're viewing from the audience, there's a handout at the back, and you can follow along and take that, take that home as well. So I'm going to start with Scenario 1, and again, my goal here is to get this out, get as many eyes on it as possible, ask questions. There's a lot of numbers behind this. This is a high-level summary. If I can't answer the question on the fly, then I will come back to you with more. So this is the general, we're focusing on the general fund. There's, you know, the city has 17 to 24 different funds. We're focusing on the primary one, which is where our property taxes come in. Scenario 1 is where we are today if we do nothing. Okay? So I've listed out four key factors in this proposal. First one there is the fiscal year 1819 property tax levy, according to our newly approved charter, drops from our current level of property taxes of 43827 down to 250. And that's, that begins, that becomes our maximum effective 1819. I've also made the assumption that the Council, that both the, the property tax will increase 3% each year, which is a part of that charter amendment. I've also made a 4.3% growth in the tax assessed value. That is, has been about what we've seen the last several years. This year, you'll recall from your September financial statement packet, that we received a 4.19% increase in property tax value, and that amounts about $8,000, so.
The assessed value?
Yeah, the assessed value, yeah. So that's the first assumption. The second assumption is that this scenario includes debt service payments for the Public Safety Communications Project. The assumption here is that we would finance the communications upgrade over a five-year period. The assumption built into this model is 3 million. So I just chose a round number, you know, if it's 31, I mean, that's to be.
Follow-on, 3 million add. The cost of the money?
As far as the interest rate, it would be, I think I used two, between two and three, because those were the rates.
2.3?
No, between two and three.
Hold on. Hold on. Duration of the loan?
It's over a five-year period. It's be three, six fiscal years, and in a couple of slides here, I'll illustrate why that's basically a half year on each, on each end.
Follow-on. How much per month or year?
I will show you that here in a second. The third item is that this, these assumptions include assumed PERS rate increases. At the time I prepared this, well, let me back up. PERS, PERS rates increase every two years, and they're effective for two years. So the 1718, 1819 years, those, those rates are known, set, and we're paying those rates. The 1920, 2021 is the next biennium, and I've got an assumed, I assume the same rate of increase from the prior, prior increase. So at the time I published this, I went with that assumption, that's what you're seeing. As of Friday, I received the actual advisory rates. These are a year and a half before this, they go into effect, and they're not final, but PERS releases those, their board received those last Friday, and ours were lower than what are, is built into this. So that's good news, and I will incorporate that into future, future iterations of this, these projections. The fourth item here is that there is built into, into this a 0% COLA, and that's just where we started. That's 1819 and beyond. The current year, 1718, had various cost of living, I say COLA, I'm sorry, I have the abbreviation, cost of living adjustment. Various employee groups get, basically in 2017, 18, everybody got a 2.1% cost of living adjustment, so.
Question, Mr. McInnes?
Counselor, as Corie.
On the COLA, I, is it realistic to assume that there's going to be a 0% increase in the COLA? And I ask that, one reason is because of the union contracts that we're negotiating, are they going to?
No, what we have negotiated right now is included in the budget. Remember, this is looking at 201819. On the 201819, on both of the other contracts, it calls for reopening of the contract to talk about salaries. So is my hope and goal in order to keep the employees that we have, that there is some kind of a COLA? Yes, it is. But we, I wanted to show you for outline years, outside of what's in the current commitment of the contract, what would happen without COLA. Now, we also have, and just like the assessment data when we're doing this, we have, and we can show you at any time, this is why we assume the assessed value and the growth is X amount, built on very specifics of which developments by development. Likewise, here, we can tell you what a 1%, a 2%, 2.5%, 3% COLA. And so we're prepared to talk about it as we go along.
Counselor McKinney, what is your assumptions on COLA? Rate of increase, percentage of increase?
Zero, which is what's on there right now, for 201819 and above.
Okay, so those are the assumptions that are built into this, the highlights. Moving into the numbers, I've highlighted a few key numbers that, that we focused on. You recall, we came to you in September, and we focused on the annual surplus slash shortfall. That is essentially, another way of saying that is the structural deficit. Are we bringing in enough money to pay for bills for that particular fiscal year? And that would be reflected in the negative 1.5 million, that would be a shortfall in 1819. So then you look at the next line down, and the any fund balance, 933,000, is essentially the beginning fund balance that we anticipate having in 1819, 2.5 million, less the structural deficit, that takes us down to 933,000. Below that is the percentage, the fund balance percentage of, basically, 933,000 is 7.81% of expenditures. Our target is 16%. That's the best practice, according to the Government Finance Officers Association. It's not fixed in stone, and there's flexibility in that, but it is, it is a best practice, The next portion of the, next portion of the page in your packet is the graph that illustrates, tells the story in a graphical format. So the red line is expenses, the green line is revenue, and you can see in this case that if you go to 1617, the green was higher than the red. We actually added to our fund balance by several hundred thousand dollars. 1718, the forecast switches, and the anticipated revenue is, falls short of what we plan on spending. So you can see, oops, excuse me. The bar graph below, that, that reflects the level of fund balance. You can see that at the end of 1718, we're anticipating 2.5 million. Here's the 933 that you saw on the previous slide. And you can see that decline over time. One of the key assumptions here, I failed to mention earlier, is that 1718 forecast actually represents the adopted budget. I have not gone and made any updates to revenue except for just a few known items, and the expenditures are the same. Okay? We're not asking anybody to cut back or change their budget at this point. The bottom half of the page, or this next slide, as, depending what you're looking at, essentially, to answer Counselor McKinney's, Counsel President McKinney's question about the debt service, the highlighted numbers here in yellow represents an assumed debt service payment structure to pay for the $3 million over, over time. So it would begin in 1819 and extend in 1920, 2021, et cetera, out to 2324.
I have a quick question.
Counselor Bacon?
Okay. Say we went, say we contracted with WACA. How much of that 3 point, whatever million do we have to spend? All of it, right? Whether we go, whether, whether we're contracted with them or not?
The answer is the majority yes, not all. So of that three, and we actually have, if we get into that, when we have a discussion dispatch, we can do it, but the bulk of the cost are the antenna, which is 1.7, which is the justification for TVFNR doing that one. Then the bounty. Then the balance, the one point four is what we have to spend, and of that one four, between seventy-five and eighty percent of that goes to radios. So dispatch does have a portion, and we'll be prepared to talk about, because we expect that there's going to be a discussion about dispatch operationally, year-to-year expenses, and some as part of the communication.
Mayor, follow on.
Counselor Matt?
Now, all these scenarios are assuming that we haven't sold any of the old equipment. That's one thing I didn't see, while, while doing, you know, doing the reading, is that this is all worst-case scenario.
And that's correct.
We haven't sold anything yet.
That's correct, so.
We pay off a bunch of debt, it's going to look a lot different.
Then those numbers that are highlighted there go away. And so then you go up to the top, and you say, oh, what was that structural gap in it? Well, that is not present. But since we haven't yet, and that's just a plan, then we're showing it that, we're saying, we're going to implement this communication system. You'll start seeing, I don't know, the first fruits of the communication, you know, soon, within six months, you know, some part of it, we're actually going in, doing stuff related to an antenna site right now, so.
Follow on, Counselor Bacon. With the successful annexation of Newburgh into Toowalatin Valley, there is no, there is no assumption that includes not being with WACA, correct?
The annexation with TVFNR does, TVFNR is a WACA agency. And so, they would not, they, they have no, um, there, there's no scenario where they would split off like their portion that's in Yamhill County and contract with Yamhill County, so no.
So there's, there's no Plan B for us to keep, uh, our nine-one-one center?
That's a different question. Um, there, there is a discussion, it's in your packet, and we'll get to it, of saying, that's what I was mentioning. So, Counselor Bacon asked if, okay, of all this communication, is some part of it dispatch? If dispatch went away or was contracted, what would that do to the numbers? We'll talk about it. It's, any number is significant when you're talking about three million dollars, but it is not a, uh, extremely large portion of the capital side. The operational side, which you've heard before, and we're going to repeat again tonight, yes, there is a difference of whether you, we go with WACA on a contract, or whether we, uh, continue to have our nine-one-one center.
What you have highlighted here, Matt, that's the annual debt service?
That's correct, and that's, that's an assumed, for illustration purposes, we're still working through the bank, getting that all ironed out, but.
Between two and three percent?
Yes.
Thank you. Continue.
So the second, the second section down here is just an illustration of the PERS rates that we discussed earlier. And just to give folks an idea of what, uh, percentage of payroll we actually pay, um, and I break these down into the, the PERS tiers that exist, and then total PERS costs. Uh, and that's just, you know, that's, um, that's a large chunk of, of the, uh, six to seven million dollars of personal services that are in that general fund, so, um, you know, that's, that, that's a primary driver for a lot of this. So, that's the base projection, and if there's no other questions, I'll move into the first scenario. Or scenario number two.
Scenario one.
Scenario number two, I'll move into.
Is, well, we have, we finances through debt service?
Correct.
Total.
Correct.
Thank you.
So this, the, the scenario number two actually illustrates, um, the same four assumptions at the top, and, and you'll see, uh, item number five is, is an increase in the public safety fee from its current five dollars. And when I say public safety fee, I mean, the combination of the three dollars for the officer and two dollars for the dispatch. We lumped it together and said five dollars, okay? And, uh, so, the proposal here, the scenario would be to increase that from five dollars as its current value to fifteen in twenty eighteen, nineteen, and then twenty dollars in nineteen, twenty, and beyond. And, uh, what that does to the shortfall here is it basically, every dollar of a public safety fee generates about a hundred thousand dollars. So, a ten-dollar increase generates a million dollars in the, in the plus, so it, it basically cuts that deficit down from one point five million down to five million, or, sorry, one point five down to five hundred thousand. And of course, here's the, here's the effect on the ending fund balance and all the way out. So the numbers here, I'm not going to touch every single one of them, but you can see the, the four-year impact on that change. So let's look at the graph, and you can see, which is what we want to see, the two lines come, you know, closer together. There's still a, uh, budget shortfall, but, um, it, it gets the lines closer, and you can see that, uh, even out four years, out, the, the fund balance is still in the black. So scenario number three is very similar to scenario number two, where you have a public safety fee increase, only it's slightly scaled back from the first option. Instead of fifteen, it's twelve for the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, and it's seventeen dollars instead of twenty in twenty nineteen, twenty, and beyond. So we scaled the public safety fee back, but added an increase on the internal, this is item number six here, internal franchise fee on water, wastewater, and stormwater revenue. And according to the Newburgh Municipal Code, uh, each of those utilities pays the general fund, uh, an internal franchise fee of five percent currently. So, to offset the lower, the, yeah, we've added, by adding the internal franchise fee two percent increase, um, it gets us, it allows us to increase the public safety fee less than the prior scenario.
Question.
Counselor Brett Johnson?
Um, just out of curiosity, um, what do the other utilities pay in franchise fees like PG and Northwest Natural?
Five.
Five?
Yeah. There's, the, the, the telecommunications is the only one that's at seven percent.
And one of them, one of them is six, did you say?
They're all, they're all five, except telecommunications at, at seven.
So telecommunications is on the tire.
Okay.
The internal franchise fee proposal here does not affect the external franchises, it just affects the internal franchises here, so. Okay, so, moving on to the graph, you can see that.
Follow on, follow on. The anticipated cost, monthly cost to the, to the, uh, to the citizen is what, if they're increased?
Yeah, the C, I don't have the number here. Um, the CRRC consultant has run the numbers, I just don't have it here in front of me today. Uh, I can come back to you with that.
There would be an increase in the monthly billing statement?
The strategy, you'd have two options at that point. You could either do one of two things, you could reduce the, uh, fund, the reserves appropriately, or you could build it into the rate to maintain the reserves, but bring in more revenue. So, yes, you'd have.
It shrinks the difference.
Right, or a combination thereof. Okay, so here's the graph that we, of the scenario we just discussed. You can see again, the, the fund balances in the black all the way through. Moving on to scenario number four, rather than, uh, adjusting the, the fees, both the franchise fee and the public safety fee, uh, we considered a local option levy. All of the top four scenario, all, top four lines are all the same here, but the fifth line here describes a local option levy with zero percent compression of a dollar per thousand of assessed value, beginning in nineteen, twenty. And so, as of eighteen, nineteen, these numbers are still the same as scenario number one. Beginning in scenario number two, you can begin to see that there's a, a strong increase, uh, you're basically getting closer to zero in the structural deficit, the annual surplus shortfall.
Question, Counselor Corie?
Uh, yeah, on the local option levy, that requires a vote of the people.
That's absolutely right, yep, yep.
And one way to look at this, for the first three options, and now this one, is a fundamental difference. This one is going to property taxes, and it's asking the voters, saying, and we're going to go in a few minutes, going to show you how much money, if we took all of our property taxes and paid, for example, public safety, police, communication, how does that line up? Much like the discussion we had with TVFNR. TVFNR discussion, we go, how much does it cost us in property tax to run a fire department? That's the dollar eighty-eight. We're going to show that here in a second, how much does it cost to run the police? So, this one requires to go to the voters. And so later on, before you start asking, well, what would be your fallback? The fallback would be, if for some reason that doesn't go, then there's, and we'll have this whole discussion about, is it a combination of cuts? Is it a combination, and what my recommendation will be, is to go to the public safety fee, which you've seen in the first three, and/or franchise fees?
Follow on, follow on. If the suggested, um, number five here, local option levy, a dollar per thousand, then it goes from two fifty per thousand to three fifty per thousand, with a vote of the people. And that's in what year?
It's beginning in nineteen, twenty.
Because of our charter.
And the reason it's nineteen, twenty is by the charter that we just passed, we said we would not go, or were prohibited from going for the next year, um, for an, an increase. So that's where we're looking at the year after.
Follow on, follow on. What year would that election take place?
In the calendar of nineteen, it would probably be general election.
Eighteen or nineteen.
Yeah. General, and you have two shots at it, you, you, November of eighteen, or you can still, yeah, I think it's May of nineteen, which is when there's another taxing issue. And right? And right now, there's no other, um, taxing in Newburgh that's planning a, a vote, but in the year following, there's been discussion in the paper about something that the school district might do.
And that's my follow-on. You, I have a two-part question here. You say without any compression, that's assuming there, there are no other political subdivisions, right?
That's what you're shown above. Obviously, if something happened between then, then we would have to put it back in.
Then it would, then there could be compression.
There could be, yeah.
Number two, if there, if a bond levy is approved, that does or does not impact compression?
Does not.
It does not, but a local option levy would?
Could, yeah, could.
Could, would or could, yes, thank you, Matt. Counselor Bacon?
What happened, I thought when we did the charter amendment, we left the dollar eighty-eight, where we could go back and ask the voters, how does that get into compression when that, that's already there? I mean, or, it's, it's not part of either one of the two things you just talked about, it's there, we said, we went to the voters and said, we would go back to you if we were going to use it. So that's neither one of those things, right?
So, it's not ours, but the dollar eighty-eight is still within the whole system that's TVFNR. So compression looks at all of the taxing agencies against the money that we, that you have as a possible of either the education or the government side. That's all I'm saying, is that if it goes to property tax, whether we have it or TVFNR could affect the total amount of the burden on, on an individual lot.
Counselor McKinney? So scenario four is the first time, uh, that we've seen the consequences of the charter amendment of additional fees and/or local option levy that would be necessary to pay the city bills.
That's one way to look at it. The, the issue of us having, spending more money than, uh, we're bringing in is not necessarily a, it's not a consequence of the, um, the amount of money of the fire being in or out, because the idea, imperfect but close, said that we spent a dollar eighty-eight in fire services. So theoretically, then that, that would be a, a wash in budgets that go forward, that we're still, we're still showing a deficit. So, um, you're right in that we don't have additional funds that we could put towards, you know, to cover this, uh, deficiency, but we also don't have the expense of the fire. This that we have is more of a function of our increased cost of operations and the limitations of fifty on of us of not being able to have our property tax keep up with what our expenses are.
Follow on. So at the time of the proposal, in the formation of the charter amendment, there was this assumption about the, the one eighty, the one eighty-eight, it was likened unto a dollar amount to that or whatever. But the real question was, is that in order for future budgets to be able to be put together and to have a successful, uh, the successful resources that we're going to need, is that the charter amendment then becomes a hiccup to achieving all of the things that we knew that were coming down the pipe, um, in terms of, like in your first scenario, the ending fund balance, you know, becomes negative two million dollars rapidly, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's almost three million dollars, or whatever. So, we knew that these things were coming, but now we've had to deal with the charter amendment. But the charter amendment is going to be, the unanticipated consequences for the public is that there are going to be numerous fees and numerous, uh, votes for, for levies, just to pay the bills.
I don't know that that's, I, I wouldn't say that that's a consequence of the charter amendment. We were, we pointed out during the budget hearings that we needed to get through TVFNR and resolve one issue, because we did know that continuing on with the fire department was going to be a greater drain on the, the city's resources, and we couldn't meet the standard that was given to us by TVFNR for the amount of property tax. That's now been resolved. I, you know, I think it's some scenario earlier on, some people thought that, including staff, that ideally, if we transferred the, um, TVFNR, and that was no longer a city function, that some portion of a dollar eighty-eight might be available to fill this gap. Because as early as two years ago, two and a half years ago, you can see, and that's the value of doing five-year plans, that you could see that we, that our tax limitation and the lack of other revenues coming in was going to say, if we can't look to property taxes to get us out at the current levels that we're at, or the reduced level after the charter. So I, I think I understand what you're saying, of maybe it takes some flexibility away by, having the dollar eighty-eight, um, go and be limited, but the, the issue and the challenge that we're at has to do with, that's, that's not the challenge we're trying to get. The challenge is that in the resources we have, and with the limitations of property tax, and short of additional funding sources to bring in, that we're trying to figure that out, which suggests, which in this option says, going back to the voters, making the case that our number one, um, expenditure in the general fund overwhelmingly is public safety, and that there's not sufficient property tax to pay for that, therefore to ask residents to pay an additional property tax.
Follow on, follow on, Counselor Bacon? I appreciate your answers very much, but as the material that you've presented here, and we're looking at here, we've gone to scenario four, all right? That's the assumption that you can't build a budget on two dollars and fifty-eight. That's the assumption that you can't build a budget on two dollars and fifty cents per thousand. It has to be three dollars and fifty cents per thousand. And then scenario, then, then scenario five is, is that you need the public option, a levy option, as well as the, the water, wastewater and what, you need both to be able to build a budget. And, and as, and as you're gonna end up showing us here, that's where the red lines and the green lines finally cross. But the gentleman next to you will be able to present a budget to the council, or whatever. And of course, you're on the hook. You have to give us a balanced budget, or you go to jail.
Right. And in, in scenario four, now moving to five, and we'll get to five in a second, you can see that the red and the green match. So we can do it with this, remembering, I mean, I'm assuming, but it's not, we're not assuming, I'm thinking there is a reasonable person can expect that we're gonna get some portion of that three point one million dollars of communication paid for by TVFNR and by the stuff we sell. But I'm not, it's not in that model. So that means that if we do sell all or part of it, that that, those two lines up there that are close to touching each other, or they're actually exceeding, add that communication debt that's in that budget that is in here, and that will improve, you know, our future. So, but we'll move on to five, just so you have that, Mayor.
Continue.
Okay, so, two more scenarios and then we're done. The scenario number five, as a local option levy with zero percent compression of eighty-three cents rather than a dollar from the prior one, but in order to offset that reduced local option levy rate, we would bring back in the internal franchise fee increase from five to seven percent. And you can see that the result is close to the same with a hundred thousand, and you can see as we get out to year five, that we are in the black on the operating revenue and then the, I'm sorry, the annual deficit and then the, and the fund balance. So, again, some of, some of these different scenarios are getting at the same thing, just with a different mix of revenue changes. This graph looks very similar to the prior one in scenario four. On a scenario six, adds a new twist to it, and essentially increases the local option levy, not increases it, levy's a dollar fourteen rather than the dollar or the eighty-three cents. So we're getting more from the local option levy, we're building in the internal franchise fee, increase from five to seven, but we're eliminating the public safety fee altogether from five to zero, and that begins in eighteen, nineteen. So you can see from the graph here, very similar structure in the lines, little bit more of a gap at the end, but again, it's just a different mix of revenue increases to get to the same spot. So what we have here, tying in with the conversation earlier about the potential of having WACA operate the dispatch, we ran these numbers, they're high-level numbers, they're not refined, but this is essentially, if we were to contract out to WACA, we do not have that quote. We do not have a solid quote. What I did was take Tuolotin's, how much Tuolotin, City Tuolotin pays WACA for their services, assuming they're fairly similar size, due to the population, compared to population of Newburgh slash Dundee. And then there was some discussion about, okay, if we do that, we still have some, some staff that needs to be retained here to deliver some of the services that our dispatchers do, above and beyond what they do as a dispatcher. So, city personnel will be, continue to be maintained here. The difference between option one and option two is simply that, what level of city personnel would be retained. There's some materials and services and some internal service charges that essentially is, Fund Thirty-One, the administrative support services allocates a portion of its costs out to the general fund for different pieces, and this is three hundred and eight thousand is how much communication pays. That would have to be retained by the city, so that would still be a cost. So, we have a little bit of offsetting revenue from the Dundee contract, so our net costs under the dispatch model, WACA dispatch model would be between eight hundred and fifty thousand, approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Counselor Bacon?
So if we don't have dispatch, but we also don't get the nine-one-one excise tax either, right? We don't have?
The nine-one-one, and this is general fund, this is focused on general fund, the nine-one-one tax is in a different fund that pays for us, and, I don't know the answer to the...
So, still relevant whether what fund it's in, but we don't get it, I wouldn't think. If we didn't have a nine-one-one, it would go to the nine-one-one. I would think.
This is the impact on our general fund?
Correct, correct, yes. So we can recap that. We have done net out when you take the nine-one-one and those costs, and we'll go a little bit, we're running out of time, is this, this chart up there? Let us show you the next one, and that'll help to answer that question.
Before we move off of that, WACA, this, this is essentially the cost of, at the time we ran this, this might not make today's cost, it's a little bit older, so it might be higher.
Slightly.
Slightly higher. But this is an approximate amount of the savings that we would anticipate. Again, these are rough numbers. I think this is meant to demonstrate a concept about, you know, what we anticipate it would look like to, to outsource the, have the WACA provide that. We need to sharpen the numbers. But now to get to the police and communications revenue expenditures...
Did you want to make a question? Counselor McKinnon?
Our nine-one-one center is gonna continue police, is that correct?
Say again.
Our nine-one-one dispatchers will continue to do police.
Well, right now, we're, it's, it's assuming we're keeping it. And if, if the scenario were it's contracting out, it'd be WACA that, that covers that. That's part of what that discussion was of, and the difference of...
The reason for my question is, if we're still dispatching police
Right.
Out of our nine-one-one center, we would still have the nine, we would still receive the nine-one-one assistance from the state.
And that's what this chart...
If it totally went police and fire, then that might be something that, that we might be missing from the state, is that. What, what is that? What is that nine-one-one assistance? The total of that?
Look, look up there on the chart right now, if you, if you refer to this one, we'll go through. What the total, because now what we're gonna show you is the total public safety cost, irregardless of the fund.
So what this, this table is designed to illustrate is total police and communication revenue expenditures, regardless of the fund. I've reflected each fund in there, and you can see that there are essentially three funds, the general fund, the nine-one-one fund, and the public safety fee fund, which has its own, because it's restricted to those purposes, it has its own fund. Okay, and then I've included in expenses, police and communications in here. So to answer the question that was raised earlier about the nine-one-one fund, here's approximately the amount of nine-one-one revenue we get in a year, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. It's used to go solely for personnel, maybe a little bit of the children's services. Okay, so...
And the personnel is in dispatch?
Correct. Yep. So, the, the general fund, and I've done this over two years.
Counselor McKinnon, did you have a follow-on?
No.
So the general fund, one of the questions that, that was raised was, okay, the net police, the revenue from the police department here does not include property taxes. That's, that's revenue generated by their activity. So they, they bring in about one, a little over one million dollars. Their expenses are about eight point one million, so their net cost to the general fund here is about seven million dollars in the current fiscal year, and seven point three in next fiscal year. So here's our property tax levy this year and next year. This year, we're bringing in seven point five million. Next year, with the reduced tax levy, it would be four point five million. Here's the ratio of how much of those expenses, the net cost, is covered by our property taxes. In this case, in the current fiscal year, just about ninety-three cents of every dollar goes to cover the police and communications costs. Next year, it would take a buck sixty-two for us to cover the anticipated cost we're bringing in for four point five million.
So the point of this, the point of what we're seeing up there is that you look at the total amount of property taxes. We had, we just had a very, kind of a robust discussion about the fire department. The fire department costs a dollar eighty-eight to run. So you could take that out, pretend we were just looking at fire. Dollar eighty-eight. Now we say we lose that, transfer it over, so the dollar eighty-eight goes. So then, how much now a property taxes remains to pay for what remains? Okay? Fire's gone, the revenue's gone. Now when we look at it, and it's the second column up there, that you see, the, the cost of, the police department doesn't go down, it's the same as what it is this year with some inflationary rates, but no big change in services. Well, it's seven point two million dollars to run our police and communications. Okay? Then you take out, how much do we bring in revenues? Because they generate a million and we have some nine-one-one dollars instead. So you figure out what the net costs are, and now you compare, if we took every dollar of every resident in property tax, and it went to nothing else. So taxpayer, every single dollar that's generated in property from you goes to one source, police, period. Doesn't go for Matt, doesn't go for me, doesn't go for Doug and, and development services, only police. We don't have enough money. So we'd only generate four point five million, but it costs us seven point two million. That's part of the rationale, or the argument, that would be made on seeking a local option levy, which is only property tax, and taking that money and combining with what we have now to pay for police. That's part of the, the presentation tonight. And Mayor, we're prepared as, whatever, as you wish, tonight or at the next meeting of, we don't have another work session coming up, but we can put it into regular business of a continued discussion on it.
Mayor?
Yes?
Counselor Murray?
My recommendation would be to take a look at this again after we figure out how much we can actually receive in funds from selling surplus equipment, because that is a big part of this, right? So we're showing a huge gap without that money in there. But we have to go to the voters, right? I mean, we have one of the finest police departments in the state of Oregon. Everybody knows it. Our community knows it. The problem is, there's just not enough money to pay for it. We have to ask for it. So, we're working on it. Thank you for all the hard work you guys have done, the numbers. I mean, yeah, they're grim, but we have to figure out how to make it work. That's why we're all here. So, anyways, thank you.
Anything else to come before some work session at this time? Counselor Johnson?
I asked the council if they have a preference for maybe doing a special meeting.
Say what?
I'd like to, to see if there's a appetite for maybe doing a special meeting just on this topic, so we could sit down and really dig into it. You know, I think as long as we have folks who wanna relitigate the charter amendment, we're gonna be taking some time on this. So, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to see an off Monday, maybe do a two-hour, or, you know, however long it takes, depending on pontificating, to go through the numbers and figure out the different scenarios.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. You, you heard the, the question from Counselor Johnson. You may canvass the council later on that. Thank you. With that, then we will be adjourned from our work session, and we'll reconvene in approximately ten minutes.
Mayor?
Yeah?
I thought about you.
Do they call when, when they want to? When they want to? Do they call? Yes.
I saw, I saw German, um, Brian, you know, she's been traveling and kind of her things, but honestly, I don't think I see her very often.
That's her?
Yeah, definitely.
Jenny?
So did that make sense when I heard?
That'll make sense to me. I just prefer the statement of the case. I was imagining it was contract. This is a...
Is it a one?
One.
One.
Yeah.
I guess we'll, I guess...
That's the big difference.
The private sector, you know, managed to...
Anyway, this is interesting, so it just wasn't...
I don't know.
The basic argument is you pay for it.
Because, because...
That's the...
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 things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah. I saw, I saw Darnin, um, Brian, uh, you know, she's been traveling and trying her things, but honestly, I don't get to see her very often. Yeah.[1636.13] person at the police department, is she brought FEMA and Office of Emergency Management, the state folks in communication, to talk about when there is a disaster, and there is this huge conflict of trying to get onto communication towers and the communication system. How do we ensure, how does the state ensure and the federal government ensure that people like the police department and fire department have priority access to towers and getting people where they need to be in a disaster? So, we worked with the state in doing that, will continue to work. We had a little bit of discussion a few minutes ago about the animal shelter, so we had some outreach to the animal shelter, letting them know in advance about, and this is not just the first time they've heard it, but of my recommendation to look to selling the animal shelter as part of finding some money to pay for the communications upgrades. So, that happened this last week. Also attended the council, short of just one, but we had tremendous turnout, meeting with other cities in Yam Hill County, and we were hosted by Grant, Ron, just talking about issues that are common to all of us throughout the county, and that was this week. Then attended the tree lighting ceremony with SANA and the fire department, and a lot of public works crews, making that happen along with Leah, our library director, and the mayor. And so, that was a success, and really exciting to go, and it's been a long time, you know, and I don't remember how many years now, the mayor does, 33, so that's pretty, almost, I mean, it's like with the way the water polo people keep coming, we're trying to stay just ahead of the Water Polo State Championships, which is awesome. Then also met with YCAP, with the youth center director, who has also been here a long time, and looked to building some additional partnerships. And then finally, a just date, again, it fits in with the affordable housing, but Doug Rucks and myself, we met with a group that is kind of an offshoot of the affordable housing, but ties in Newburgh High School, and some of the ideas that they're looking at of using students in innovative design ways to develop prototypes for tiny houses. And so, we met with them, talked about, you know, how could it fit within existing zoning, within our existing development regulations, what things might have to change to do that. And we're working with them and Love Inc., who anticipates using two pilot homes that would be built by students installed by June of next year as some transitional house, that it would probably be located now on some church facility in town. So, just like the churches are partnering with us on emergency preparedness stuff, the churches, a group of them, select, are looking to the school district, and with the group of community folks looking at affordable housing, try to come up with solutions. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions or comments for the city managers? None appearing, thank you very much, I appreciate it. We want to move to some council appointments. And before you is a motion to consent to my reappointment of various city committees, and I am bringing to you the reappointment for the Affordable Housing Commission of Mr. Steve Comfort, for our Budget Committee, a reappointment of Jack Reardon and Lon Wall, for our Historic Preservation Commission, the reappointment of Rick Fieldhouse, for our Newburgh Area Management Committee, the reappointment of Alan Edwards and Councilor Stephen McKinney, and for our Planning Commission, the reappointment of Phil Smith, and for the Traffic Safety Commission, the reappointment of Neil Klein and Tony Roos. And I bring this to you as my motion seeking your consent. It's been seconded, is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the question was called for, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. And we have one more for you on that one, and that one is, I have before you a motion to consent to my appointment of new members to various city committees, and these are for the Affordable Housing Commission. I'm recommending the appointment of, I have made the appointment and am seeking your consent for the appointment of Shannon Eoff. You see the write-up on that for Shannon, and I'm glad Father didn't get in the way. Planning Commission, Mr. Robert Ficker, and for the Transit Lodging Ad Hoc Tax Committee, Mr. Robert Griffin. With that, I make that as my motion, it has been seconded by- Counselor Corey? There being no further discussion, the question has been called for, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing. For those that are here with us this evening, there's new appointments or reappointments, thank you, I appreciate it very much. Would those, would those people stand up and be recognized by the council? Mr. Wall, Mr. Reardon, Mr. Griffin, Rosa, are you standing up? Thank you all for being here, we appreciate it, and we thank your willing, your willingness. And with that, we're going to move into the area of public comments, and this is a section of the agenda that provides an opportunity for citizens to address the council on matters of their concern and relevant to the city, and it can be also relevant to matters on the consent calendar, but not other specific items on the agenda for council deliberation. This section of the agenda is for a maximum of 30 minutes, and it may be extended only on my discretion. I would like to remind all citizens who have signed up to speak, that each speaker will have five minutes to address the council. Also, collective comments by an individual under public comments in this section will be limited to five minutes. And I noticed we have a number of people signed up. If you're saying the same thing that the previous person says, you may announce that and then let that stand, we understand that there's a number of people that have signed up for one item. Persons wishing to speak during this section must complete the public comment testimony form and give the form to the city recorder prior to beginning of this session, and I believe I have them here. When invited to speak, individuals shall come forward, identify themselves by their names, address is not required, turn on the mic, the silver button on the right, and identify themselves. It is asked that if there is any request for information the speaker makes, that it be made in writing and presented to our city recorder, which will be forwarded to myself and the council, and we will assign the request to the appropriate staff for review and response. Those responses will be reviewed by us and before sending to the requestor, and the response may be by either email or USPS. And the council is also requesting that all persons in attendance avoid conduct that is unreasonably loud, disreputably profane. So with that, I'm going to begin the public comment period, and I'm going to call on Janet Forn, I believe, that has an item she wants to bring to our attention. The silver button on the right, please.
I'm Janet Forn, from the Newburgh Animal Shelter Friends, I'm the vice president. Krista Everly, which is our president, could not be here tonight. Honorable mayor and city councillors, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for partnering with us this past three years. Your maintenance department has been very responsive to necessary building fixes and landscaping needs, and we have provided housing for their stray dogs and custody, protected custody dogs for the police department. Both parties have complied with the spirit of our lease contract. We appreciate the support from the city and the police department for our operation of the shelter. A little history for those not familiar with the Newburgh Animal Shelter Friends, the nonprofit, we have worked 17 years in fundraising. During the first 10 years, we had many auction dinners, bake sales, and other events to raise money for the new shelter. The city and NASF partnered in the funding of the construction project. In fact, we were actually a city subcommittee in those days. March of 2013, the animals were transferred from the old shelter to the new one, even though the building was not totally finished. In July 2014, animal control no longer operated the shelter, and NASF was given the opportunity to operate it. We took the challenge because it was important to us that the shelter continued to provide service to the community, and we needed to honor our donors. NASF's mission is to operate a no-kill shelter, and continues to this day, to raise money for operational needs to finish the building. To date, NASF donors have committed a total of 636,000 in construction. This is not including animal care, this is only construction materials and labor. A few minutes ago, in a city council meeting, it was mentioned that selling the animal shelter was being considered. We inquired with the city manager about explaining why this is being considered, and the response was, it's an option on the table in order to meet the city budgeting needs. He mentioned other organizations had been approached to gauge their interest in purchasing the building, but there was no interest. We were surprised the city approached other organizations before consulting with our current, with their current tenant who wants to continue their successful business. Why should our donors continue to support us if there's rumors of selling the building? We are expecting to renew our lease contract with the city of Newburgh in 2018. We entered our contractual agreement in good faith, which means dealing with each other honestly and fairly, as per this statement. Section 2.4, renewal, as long as a tenant is not default on the lease, beyond the applicable peer period, if any, 120 days prior to the expiration of the lease, the landlord agrees to enter into good faith negotiations for an extension of or a renewal of this lease. We have over 2,000 donors that would be very upset if NASF is no longer operating the shelter. They sponsor pets, kennels, special medical procedures, we have citizen foster programs, we have established partnerships with Homeward Bound, Newburgh Vet Hospital, Family Pet. We came here last meeting, and Crystal Case, our NASF secretary, gave testimony about our successes, the number of adoptions and so forth. We've been very fortunate to have three staff members that want careers at the animal shelter. We have 507 adoptions to date this year. We cannot forget the 17-year partnership between NASF and the city. We cannot forget about our donors that have given thousands to our local animal cause. Our successes prove the shelter is needed, and we are prepared to ask our donors and animal adopters to give testimony to the council if requested. We can't have a business with the possibility of the plug pulled in the middle of our careers, in the middle of our business. NASF would like to officially request to be given the first right of refusal and fair opportunity to purchase the shelter building, if it's necessary.
Thank you, Janet. Are there any questions or comments from the floor? None appearing, thank you very much. Barbara Lipinski, please.
See if I can do this. Oh, hi. I'm going to be brief because-
And you are?
I am Barbara Lipinski, I am also a board member of the Newburgh Animal Shelter Friends. Jan said pretty much what I want to say, except that I wanted to add that I was the treasurer of the organization for several years, even though I'm no longer the treasurer, I'm still on the board. And this is an organization that I feel very passionately about. My husband Rick and I were one of the few people still remaining that started this whole group with Darwin Adams, who some of you may know. And I want to add only to Jan's comments, that our group has continued to fundraise every year, and we have added construction improvements to the building since 2013, when we took occupancy of it. In the years since 2012, we have put in over $125,000 on just additional building improvements, excuse me, and all of these funds have come from donors in this community. We can document our total funds of over 636,000 that we have put into the building. So, we do have some great equity in that building. I have documents and receipts for all of these expenditures going way back, we'd be happy to share them with anyone, if anyone wanted to see them. When we started out some 17 years ago, it was always the group's intention to fundraise to build a shelter and to give it to the city to operate. As you know, that has not worked out that way. The police department asked us to take over management of the shelter when they discontinued animal control, and we agreed to do it. And then Yam Hill County also pulled out of animal control. So, there is a great need for what we are doing. We managed with volunteers for the first year, have gradually added paid staff, and still work with volunteers as well. We've worked very hard to develop this successful shelter, and our donors would be upset if the building were not being used for the purpose for which they donated. So, in short, I just want to say, I hope we can continue to work with the city to keep it running as successfully as it is now, and we respectfully request that our organization be consulted before any major change occurs to the current agreement, and that we be given the right of first refusal, so to speak, on future sale, operations, et cetera. So, thank you for your time.
Any comments or questions from the council? Counselor Murray?
I had a question I forgot to ask for the last speaker. Is the NASF organization prepared to, like with your operating plan, could take on the amount the city is trying to, for what a plan would be to sell the building? Could your organization able to buy the building?
Right now, this minute, no. I mean, we don't even have an idea because it hasn't been put forward to us, what we're talking about dollar-wise. We would, we would have to vet the whole thing, but-
I would think that'd be something, Joe, that we can talk about. I think a right of first refusal is a good idea, and you guys have had a very successful program set up there, so at some point, I think that's something that we can take a look at.
Yes, but all of this is fairly new to us, and no figures have ever been presented, so I would assume an appraisal, and then would hope that we could work out a reasonable equity agreement, because we do have quite a bit invested in this building.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we have a number of people that have some concerns about the traffic situation, and I'm going to ask again if you have the basics, or saying the same thing, you may identify yourself, indicate that you endorse what's being said, but we have need to keep our time short, and I'm asking, please confine your presentation to five minutes each. And with that, I'm going to call on Carmen Wolf.
Mayor, city council members, my name is Carmen Wolf. I'm here to speak about the access in and out of, and I believe Ms. Ryan has presented you guys with a copy of my email as well as the map, so I'll be referencing that map as well. Access in and out of the highlighted neighborhoods south of First Street and Highway 219.
Can you hold for just a minute?
Sure.
Um, hang on just a minute, I gotta stop this. We weren't able to reproduce the map, but Doug designed one when he came back from conference this afternoon, so if you have questions when she's done speaking, I can pull the map up. But I can't run the timer and the map at the same time.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Okay. I'm here to speak about the neighborhoods and the extremely dangerous and limited traffic access in and out of the neighborhood south of First Street and Highway 219. Over the past several years, with new neighborhood developments, including Ursula, Ursula Place, Orchard Layer, Airport Way, and Highlands at Hess Creek, before these neighborhoods were developed, approximately 410 dwelling units existed. In less than 10 years, more than 50% growth has occurred, and approximately 240 new homes have been added. These 650 total dwelling units likely house at least 1,700 people or 7% of the city's population. Most households own two cars, maybe more, with the George Fox students renting in our neighborhood with HOA housing that is available. And this is all behind the Sportsman's Airport. There are only two, technically three exits out of that neighborhood. There's Highway 219, which now has a barrier only limiting you to go south. There is Highway 219 and Everett Street, which has become extremely dangerous, and Church Street and Highway 219. If there is approximately 1,700 people residing in this area, most households own at least two cars, which puts the number at least 1,300 cars. In addition to churches, at least three businesses, and the Fernwood Pioneer Cemetery make this area of town their home. It is easy to imagine that traffic has increased significantly, however, it is surprising that no accommodation has been made for safely exiting this neighborhood. I was informed that ODOT a few years ago, with having hearings with the city council, that they referenced and referred to the city of Newburgh for the recommendations of the barrier on Highway 219. It is easy, or on the contrary, the exit and entry options have more, have become more limited and dangerous. I had referenced some information about the map, but that's a little irrelevant here when I can't see it. While improving traffic flow around Newburgh and Dead D is enhanced, and it is, and we are grateful, this area of the city has also impacted, been impacted negatively, most considerably in the area of safe access out of our neighborhood and in. One thing I'm really concerned about is if my peers and the population that is surrounding me with my neighbors, if we have such a hard time getting out of our neighborhood, I'm very concerned about the first responders getting in. There are some options, and I would like to present that to the city council. On the corner of Highway 219 and Everett Street, a traffic light would greatly decrease the dangers of- the dangers of the traffic coming from Highway 99. People are going 35, 40 miles an hour heading south. Highway 219, heading west towards downtown Newburgh, are again going 35 to 40 miles an hour south. I have personally sat at that intersection, looking at Walgreens trying to go straight to get to Highway 99, and I've sat there for almost 20 minutes. I have seen individuals almost get hit, even though there's the pedestrian light. I have seen near accidents, and I have been fearful for my daughter even crossing the street. While it may be early to have a collective statistics on the effect of recent changes to access, many neighbors in this area, some of whom are here in this audience, can share concerning stories of recent accidents, near misses, and reckless driving at access points. Because of these experiences, neighbors in this community implore the council to consider taking appropriate action with the options that I have mentioned. We welcome the opportunity to provide additional feedback should the council be interested. I appreciate your time, and I hope that you guys will please take a look at the traffic. And I don't know if there's the things that you can put down, the wires that you guys can put down to see how fast people are going, but I don't know what all ODOT has done or said, but this is really serious, and I hope that the council will take into consideration.
You did very well.
Thank you for responding to my email.
Would you put up the map then, just so that everybody is oriented, please? Councilor McKinney?
Carmen.
Did you have a question?
Carmen, in your discussion with city officials, have you talked to ODOT, or have you just talked to city officials?
So far, Mr. Andrews did provide me with the name of an individual from ODOT. I have not reached out to her yet, because he did not provide the last name, so I did plan on looking that up on the state of Oregon's website. They do have access to the employees unless the council would be interested in providing me with that information. So so far, I am just coming to you because you are my local government.
Well, I'm sure that the council can provide you the complete name and a telephone number so that you can make further inquiries there.
Councilor McKinney?
Yes.
If I may. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So when the email came in from Ms. Wolf today, I actually did send it on to Lisa Nell at ODOT, and so I can get her the contact information.
Thank you, Doug. This is not the first time that the council, over a long period of time, has talked about that intersection, particularly at Second and 219. Part of the information that you might like to hear is that the idea of the pork shops, that's the idea of the ride-in, ride-out that ended up being there. That discussion has taken place many years, even before the bypass proposal finally came to us and went there. So we are aware of people trying to cross 219 on Second Street and the many accidents and different things there. We're aware of the accidents and the fatalities that have occurred at Everest and 219, particularly after the double strike of the individual struck once and then struck again by the following car. That got our attention a lot. It was, we've had a city engineer that has personally invested his time and personal time counting cars and the near misses at that particular intersection. It was the council that successfully installed and did everything that was necessary to get that crosswalk there, the lit crosswalk with a blinking light. I want to say that our share was in excess of a quarter of a million dollars. I think that that was almost a half million dollar project there. So we're aware of the fact that the highway presents a big problem, except the problem, big problem for us, is that we do not have jurisdiction.
So it's ODOT?
Over 219. They're the major highways, 219, 99W, 240. All of those is, we have very limited input there. I applaud you bringing this to our attention. Now we need to get ODOT's attention as well. Trying to come up with a plan to move the kind of traffic that you're talking about out of that portion of town and integrating it with that, this is a huge problem. So you are, we will never make light of the problem that you've reintroduced us here to, and we will employ our energies to try and do what we can do there. I'm just one person, I can't speak entirely for the council, but the council has desires about making 219 at Second Street at Everest and others to be as safe as they possibly can. It might be noted that when traffic lights were discussed at Everest and 219, it becomes almost an impossibility to sequence the lights to get through that center of town. And they're barely sequenced now. In other words, when things turn red, when things turn green, or whatever. But I don't want to make light of the fact is that I'm dismayed that you have to spend 20 minutes, you know, trying to do that. I've had people in that neighborhood, they turn right, they go down to the light at, what is that?
Go down to Scholz for Les Schwab and turn around.
Yeah, and then turn back north, you know, that way to try and get out of it. So people have gotten kind of creative, but at least taking advantage of, it's safer to turn right and try and cross anything there, is whatever. And of course, it's been made an impossibility for you to turn left, except at Everest, you know, there. So.
So Mr. Rux is the individual that I should be consulting with when I try to reach out to ODOT?
Present your documents to the city registrar, and she will make sure that they get addressed to the right department, and that department head and/or the council will get back to you, as the mayor remarked at the very beginning of this session here. So what you're saying is important to us. Let's continue the discussion, but it's a big problem. It's over pavement that we don't even have jurisdiction on.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Mayor, one quick comment.
Oh.
Councilor Murray? Thank you for coming. I think one of the things that we, part of our council priorities are to make sure that, and I'm new to this, but we're community members too. I mean, I live on College, North College Street. Thanks for coming in. This is a big deal to us. We have an amazing staff that can help with stuff like this, so, you know, feel like you can come to us, the whole community, when you have issues, right? That's why we're here, because we live here too. So we want to make a difference. So, you know, whether we can help you with it or not, we have the resources to get you the information you need. So you can feel free to email us. We have a website with all of our contact information, so that's one of the things I really want the city to be able to know, that our community is, you can come to the council, anybody from the city, and we will help get you answers and try to get an answer for you. That's what I would want, that's what I want, I live here. So anyways, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We have a number of people signed up to speak to us on this same subject. I hope we don't take quite as long with each one, if I may. Alina Kaz, please. Alina Kaz?
City council members, my name is Alina Kaz. I am 13 years old. My only transportation is my bike, and I have many friends who live in the Greens. And the fastest way to get to the Greens is going across Highway 219. It is very unsafe, I feel, for a 13-year-old or child to be crossing to see my friends. It's very time-consuming, because instead of taking one mile, it could take two miles. It's, that's pretty much it.
I think we got the point.
Yeah.
Questions or comments? It's a good point. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so, good evening. My name is Ned Knight, and I live on Kennedy Drive, one of over 600 residents living just south of Highway 219. And this will reiterate a little of what's been said, but I'll keep it short. Related to the bypass project, which, as you know, included improvements to Highway 219, including the center median installation at the Second Street Fernwood Crossing. Yes, there was something needed to improve traffic safety at that intersection, and a traffic light, as you know, was not permissible due to height restrictions right at the airport runway there, so thus the median solution, if you will. But what I'd like to emphasize is, since that time, when that crossing was made or was stopped at September 7th, it has forced a dramatic increase in traffic at the Everest and Highway 219 intersection, okay? I mean, Everest has always been an issue, and now it's even more so. I've even seen school buses carrying children trying to negotiate that intersection, not to mention heavy trucks, which are not exactly excellent at acceleration and starting getting through it. Not to mention the long lines that you've heard during rush hours, morning and evening. It's really a major traffic concern. And so I think I echo the sentiment of a lot of other people, and I say that the only sensible improvement for safety in traffic is a traffic light there. So we obviously have the support of nearly all the residents that live in that neighborhood, and essentially, we're held hostage because it's an unsafe way to cross the highway. It's really a way I think you should think about it. And so we need to contact ODOT, see what the possibilities are and what a timeline could be, because does it really have to wait for major traffic accidents to occur? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or comments? Thank you. Ann Wolfher, please.
Hi, my name is Ann Wolfher, and I live in Corinne Street. I echo a lot of the same stuff that they're saying. I know as a driver coming back, that I really appreciate you guys putting that blinking yellow light, but it doesn't always help when it's really dark. And I've almost hit people trying to turn left on Everest from 219. I know going the other way, when I leave the neighborhood, if I turn right off of Everest onto 219, and then I want to turn left by Les Schwab, I've almost gotten rear-ended, and I know other people have. So it's just a safety issue. My daughter and my new grandson live with us, and one time when she was leaving Fred Meyer, it took her over 45 minutes to get home because the traffic was so bad. So I agree with the last gentleman. I feel like we're being held hostage, and it's really unsafe. So that's all I have to say.
Any comments or questions for Ann Wolfher? None appearing? Kathy Young, please.
Hello.
I'm trying to capture notes to pass on, so I wasn't trying to ignore you. Continue.
Hi, Mayor Bob. I don't know if you remember me from Mabel Rush or not, but top fourth grade there. I know many of you. I'm Kathy Young.
Thank you.
I live on Corinne, lived there nine years. I've lived in each quadrant, interestingly enough, of Newburgh, over 27 years. And so if I don't know some of you, I'm sure I know some of your family. So I know most everybody. I delivered 200 little notices about tonight's meeting to the neighborhood, and they were, people that couldn't be here wanted to be here, and they're like, "Go and speak for us." So I'm representing a lot of people that are very, very frustrated. And I know Mike, known you for 26 years, said that this is an ODOT situation, but you're our people. You're the ones that represent us, and we need your help. And we don't, we're not politicians. I mean, so many people couldn't be here tonight because they're working, or they don't get home till too late. And we need your help. So, and the city manager, I haven't met you yet. Hi, I'm Kathy. But all of the houses, all of that was approved to put in. So this, you know, you say, "ODOT, ODOT," but this is on all of you, because it was approved, and it's very unsafe. I mean, just live there for a week, and you're gonna pull your, your hair's gonna turn gray. Sorry. But, so I just, I'm really challenging you to not have a fixed mindset of, "We can't do anything about this because it's not our road." But these are your people, and we need your help. We really need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? None appearing? Thank you very much. Kathy Bolander, please.
Hello, I'm Kathy Bolander. Kathy, too. She's tutors down for me.
Kathy Also.
I'm Kathy Also. I live on Corinne. I've been in Newburgh for just a few years now. And I'm a resident and a very happy taxpayer, and I work, I'm home-based. I work out of my home. And I leave at various times throughout the day, and there's not a time I've left my house where I've not been frustrated. It adds time to my day. I have to, I always add at least 15 minutes onto my schedule to get where I need to go because I have to get out of the neighborhood, which just sounds kind of crazy, right? But it's true. And so it is very frustrating. I don't use Everest. It's ridiculous. It's, you just, you just can't do it. It just adds frustration and time, and you're putting your life on your hands. I go up to Church Street and hang a right, and then pray that I can eventually turn left. And it depends, sometimes I go, and I go down 219, and I turn right, and those are the really good days, you know, until I get slowed down by a tractor off McKay. But it's, it's just not a safe neighborhood. It's not a safe neighborhood for our kids, for elderly people, first responders. It's very, very difficult to get in and out. And that's about all I have to say. It's different. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Kathy? None appearing? Mr. Richard Arnold, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Richard Arnold. I live on Bina Street, or Bina Drive, excuse me. I've lived in that neighborhood for 15 years. Three years I lived on East Third, and for the last 12, I've lived on Bina. And unfortunately, I was not paying attention to your council meetings back when they were discussing blocking off Second Street for the safety of the street. I did do some due diligence, which I apologize to Mr. Rux now, I'm not entirely sure his department did, but the simple fact of the matter is, is that the amount of traffic accidents and traffic deaths in that particular intersection over the last seven years, at least in my personal opinion, is nominal in comparison to locking an entire neighborhood into a community. Now, I'd like to give you guys a couple of facts that I've witnessed myself. There were never any traffic monitoring lines. There was never any blatant discussion of that intersection, other than a blip in the bottom of a flyer regarding the bypass. I personally did talk to ODOT and discuss the situation with them, and they told me that the decision to block off that intersection was the decision that was made by the city and given to them as a part of the project of the bypass, that they took over because we didn't have the money to do it. So my concern here is, is that nobody really even thought about us from the beginning. Because when you look at these intersections, here's the facts. Church Street is right off of a major off-ramp of Highway 99 going onto 219. Major trucks, cars going 40, 35, 40 miles an hour are right there. So trying to turn right onto that street is just asking to be sidelined. Everett Street already has a sign at the intersection of Second and Everett that says, "Caution, there may be traffic ahead." Not to mention it's right around the corner from an existing busy intersection, which means that it is just going to get worse if we try to put a traffic light there. Now, the concern about Second and 219 is that that's right off of the landing strip of the airport. However, I personally contacted the FAA and asked them what needed to be done, and they informed me that if I had the measurements, the altitude, all of the details of... And they informed me that if I had the measurements, the altitude, all of the details of the intersection, and presented it to them, that they would give a detailed description of what they would feel would be in the best interest of being able to make a traffic control there. Now, I wish that we had had this conversation before, God knows how many millions of dollars were put in to put that divider up. But, the simple fact of the matter is, is that the only true solution for our problem is to put a light on Second and 219. And if that means putting posts on the sides of the intersection so that we don't interrupt the approach vector of the, of the airport, then, you know, then that's more money. And sure, the state of Oregon's gonna have to figure it out, because we obviously don't have it. But, like everybody else has said here, you guys are our voice. And we, you know, we pay our taxes, we do our voting and stuff like that, and we don't have any alternative. But as long as the plans are put through the FAA, then no matter what happens to that airport, the city of Newburgh, the state of Oregon, will not be held accountable for any accidents that happen. And they have done other approaches where they have put lights into it. Because, one of the things that people don't pay attention to is that the approach vector for that airport is actually farther away than what the intersection is. People see that big roundabout at the end, and they think, "Oh, that's where the planes land." But that is not where the planes land, that's where they turn around to take off at. The actual approach vector is past that circle about another 50 feet into the approach ramp. So, I appreciate you guys taking time to listen to me tonight, and if, if by chance you guys happen to have, you know, facts from your standpoint that prove me wrong, that somebody didn't do due diligence as far as figuring out how many traffic cars and how much, what's going on in that neighborhood, then by all means, please prove me wrong. But, thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, appreciate you. Jeanette Adlon, please. The microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. Let me turn it, sorry about that. Pretty much everything I was going to say, people have already said. I do own a property in the neighborhood that we all live in back here. I was told by a city of Newburgh engineer that there was an IGA between the city of Newburgh and ODOT, that once that divider went up on Second, where the airport is, that there was going to be, had to be a light, that ODOT was going to install at the intersection of Second and Everest. Now, I was kind of surprised that some of the initial reaction that the people in the council had is, "Okay, you guys need to lobby ODOT." I think, in my opinion, that it's the council's responsibility to get ODOT to a meeting, and maybe then the neighborhood can come, and they can express their concerns to an ODOT representative right here, so they don't have to, you know, go out of their way. But this was a city of Newburgh decision to do this to this neighborhood. I feel like this neighborhood is like a forgotten neighborhood, it's a pocket of Newburgh. I appreciate the efforts that I hear that you guys want to put in affordable housing. I think that's so awesome. You have a neighborhood here that is affordable housing, is children, George Fox students. You, you have, it's a working neighborhood, it's densely developed, multiple people, poor household. You know, give these people a chance to get in and out of their homes. It was the day that that barrier went up on Second Street by the airport, that this all just became out of control. And thank you for the, the light, or the yellow pedestrian light. We appreciate that, but that is not enough. That is not enough now. The situation has changed, somebody's gonna get killed. We cannot wait three years for this light to go in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions or comments from Ms. Adlon? From McKinnney? Adlon?
Thank you for your concern. You also need to know is that we're not giving you an excuse about jurisdiction over the We own your concerns as much as you do. You should also know is that the very neighborhoods that you're talking about, this council made them possible with the Wilkens Brothers, with the reduction of fees, some loan structures, and some other things. Or else those neighborhoods would have never happened without the council going 110% to make sure, you know, that that happened. There are members of this council that made it, they're, 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 they're personal, you know, about making sure that, that, that that happened. That's just an example of how the council has been working for affordable housing, and that's a tangible example of what's going on there. So, please don't take my remarks as an excuse about jurisdiction. But, I'm a counselor that worries about the jurisdiction on 99W, because it makes a difference on how we can develop our downtown flow and pattern there, too. There's, it's, when you're sitting up here, it's not one hoop, it's a thousand hoops that you're going through to try and get everything going there. I'm concerned about a 13-year-old and a bicycle. I hear that. I hear the comment about the dark. I'm coming from my home at Spalding Oaks down, down Meridian, and Meridian is so poorly lit now, and there's people, you know, trying to get to the campus or whatever. I nearly hit two people traveling at 25 miles an hour, because some people just, they're gonna come out, they're wearing dark clothing and everything else. So by the time I arrived at the council meeting tonight, I was kinda shaking, because I worry about the dark in these streets and other things like that. So, I'm not trying to make an excuse for myself. We hear you, and, and we're trying to go through the hoops to help alleviate this problem. I'm interested in the document that you might think is out there about ODOT doing that light at some further date, at Second and others. The pork chop idea has been around a long time. That's that Second Street, that's what we refer to, the, the right-in, right-out, those pork chops. Thank God they didn't cost a million dollars. But, they, we, we know about this problem, and we'll do what we can to help alleviate it. We don't want, want you guys to feel trapped in your neighborhood that we helped create.
And I, I echo the fact, if there is an IGA, and it does say that, we're, we'll find it. City staff will find it, and they will work on that aspect of it.
Can I just have one second? Thank you, I didn't mean to, you know, be in a front to you, I appreciate everything you've done to make that neighborhood what it is. Thank you very much.
Christina, and I'm struggling with the writing on the, you will introduce yourself, please.
My name is Christina Farias.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I live on Donna Drive, and I've only lived there a couple of years now with my husband. And when I, I work in McMinnville, so when I leave Everest, I have to turn left onto 219, which I endorse everything that everyone has said here tonight. But, even during broad daylight, I have seen people who have already started into the intersection be almost hit by vehicles going towards 219 or 99, the light. So, it's not even just the dark, it's broad daylight that, you know, it's very dangerous. And, so, when I come home at night, it's not that bad, because I just take the 219 and then turn right onto Everest. But if I'm coming from another way, like from Fred Meyer, or from Sherwood, or anything like that, I actually don't feel safe enough to be able to take Everest, or even the light at 219 and 99. I go into Old Town Newburgh, make a loop, and then come back around, so that I can turn right into my neighborhood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions or comments? Thank you, appreciate it. Now, Mr. Mark Gendelman, is that, am I close? Gendelman, is that correct? Thank you. Glad you gave me a second chance.
Thanks, I'm Mark Gendelman.
Please identify yourself on the mic.
I'm Mark Gendelman. I agree with all my neighbors, it's a real struggle. I live on Second Street with my wife, I've been there for about a year and a half. My wife is a new, first-time adult driver, she's got her learner's permit, and I'm very concerned about how she's gonna get in and out of the neighborhood, as it is. I've never waited at the stop sign there at 219 for more than three minutes. But I also learned how to drive in Los Angeles, so, you, you don't want a lot of me's in this neighborhood. I'm able to get in and out of there in those tight situations, and it scares me. So, I can understand how some people are stuck there for 20 minutes, I actually think that's believable. Because the margins are just so tight, and it's so unsafe. And I've seen the lights of first responders out there many nights, as there's been accidents. And, you know, it sounds like you don't necessarily have the power to relieve the situation, but you have the ability to, you know, to, to guide us in the right ways, and get us in touch with the people who can, and I hope that you will. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? None appearing, thank you very much, appreciate it. Cindy Adams, please.
Hi, I already have a really loud voice, so I may not need to.
But we need to know who's talking to us.
All right. Can you hear me now? My name is Cindy Adams, and I live on East Third Street. I'm a prisoner of 219 and Everest. I say that jokingly, of course. But I thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and listening to us speak, I'm here with my neighbors. I have, I agree with what everybody has said, I would like to add a couple of comments, however. Stephen, I would like to mention that I really appreciated everything, and I've been listening to you intensely all night regarding the issues with the 219 and the Everest. I'm not sure if I heard it being mentioned or not, but that crosswalk that's there, the cars do not stop at that crosswalk for a crosswalk. I walk all the time, so they don't, so that's a big issue, too. I have two big concerns, one of them is the liability exposure to the city. And the other issue that I have is that it's a homeowner, but I actually live in my home, I don't rent it out in that Orchard's Lair neighborhood, which there are a lot of rentals, but I actually live in the home that I rent. I'm very concerned about property values, and the fact that whether or not I'm gonna be able to resell my house at some point in time, based on the current status. Far as I'm concerned, this, this modification has been a big fail. It takes me 10 minutes longer to get to work, I am a commuter, I'm a professional. But I have a suggestion. When I leave my house, I take the right turn on 219, and then I make a left on Springbrook, then I go all the way up to 99 and head out that way to go to work in Tigerd. My suggestion is, could we please put the bug in an ear of somebody to make a left blinking yellow at the intersection that's going southbound on 219? Because traffic that's coming northbound, there's not a whole lot of traffic there, but we're stuck there waiting two or three minutes for the light to change. It would really help traffic flow if we could be able to make that left turn on a blinking yellow. And I've also noticed that the people in, over on the other side are also kind of hijacked by the left turn they're not able to make on Wilsonville Road. But perhaps, there's a way we could make, I'm not sure what the ultimate plan is, maybe the plan is to have a right-turn-only lane, but if, coming from, going northbound on 219, and a right on Springbrook, if we could get a U, a U-turn allowed, that way people wouldn't have to go past, past 219, pull into Norman's, make a U-turn, and come all the way back down so they could go on you, Wilsonville Road. That's just a suggestion, I thought I would at least come in with a suggestion, I'm not here just to complain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilor McKinnney?
Well, I think that you'll be gratified to hear that at Adolf Road, eventually there's going to be a turnoff at Adolf Road at 219 to address the Wilsonville Road. I mean, it really hit the fan in here, when we had our discussions about Wilsonville Road.
Right.
That's there. But, I don't know how that translates in the trans, in our minutes or whatever.
Yeah, but right now you just got people driving all around town, taking a bunch of side streets just to get in.
But your suggestion of a right-hand turn, and then going down to the light, so that you can turn left onto.
No, not a suggestion to have a right-hand turn lane, I'm suggesting there's a U-turn.
The way that you're doing it now appears to be, that's much safer than what, what some other people risk trying to get from one side of town to the other there. So, thank you for your suggestions, and ODOT and the city are already working on that Wilsonville Road type of thing there.
Yeah. I think the blinking light, though, that at 219 and Springbrook will help push the traffic a little smoother through there, especially for us people that drive during traffic hour.
I see staff people making that note.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. We have been in discussion with ODOT staff, and the area director for this area, Elisa Nell, and we have your testimony, we have know-ho has been testifying, we have it on the, on, we've captured it on tape, and these remarks will be forwarded to ODOT. This is something that, yes, I agree with you, we need to partner with them. It's not our decision alone, it's not their decision alone. We're gonna have to work on the partnership, but I sincerely appreciate you bringing this information in. I personally took an ODOT representative and toured your neighborhood, and it showed them what the problem is. And, they were making copious notes, saying, "Well, this is not what I understood, well, this is not what we were told." So, we're making progress. Thank you for being here, we sincerely appreciate that. And with that, we're going to move on to new business.
Mr. Mayor, may I just interject one comment?
You may.
The city also has a traffic safety commission that meets month, meets quarterly, and you are always welcome to come to it as well as the council. I just thought I would throw that out there. And, the gal who kind of coordinated you all has my contact information if you want to get further comments in the future to the council.
Thank you.
That was it.
With that, we're moving to new business. Are you okay? We do not have a consent calendar, so those of you that are following the agenda tonight, there is no consent calendar, so we were going to new business, and the first thing that is before us for new business is Resolution 2017-3421. And this is a resolution accepting the canvas of votes. Resolution to accept the canvas of votes for November 7, 2017, special election for Measure 36-190, related to the annexation into Tooleton Valley Fire and Rescue District, and certifying the results. If you wanted this kind of delay just a moment, Councilor McKinnney is needed to be absent for just a second, and we'll quiet the room down. Councilor McKinnney, or, Councilor, City Manager, Anna, and I'm thinking 3,000 things at once.
That accompaniment them. Did you want us to just, well, there's a few still left here, but, so you know what's in the IGA related to that signal?
You, well, yes, we will do that during council business.
Okay, sure.
I know what's in it, but you, there may be others that don't, so go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Johnson.
Can we request like a little five-minute break?
Well, I guess, we'll take a five-minute break, we're already, there's Councilor McKinnney. Go ahead, take your break, we'll take a break. Sue, hold on.
We gotta start again. This is a resolution accepting the canvas of votes for November 7, 2017, for Measure 36-190.
Related to an annexation into Twolton Valley Fire and Rescue District and certifying the results. City Recorder, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Recorder C. Ryan, and also Elections Officer, this is just a formality that where we certify the election results, and the only change to the RCA in your packet is that I did receive the official results from Yamhill County for the election on November 29th. They look exactly the same, they just have the seal of the county clerk.
Are there any questions for the City Recorder? We have an individual signed up that would like to speak to us just briefly on this, so I'm going to call Mr. Robert Seppi.
Good evening. My name is Robert Seppi, and yes, I will be brief on this. I would like to thank the council for how it has approached the annexation election, and the acknowledgement that this election was in fact required by law. It was an uphill battle to have this recognized, but I credit the council for eventually making the right decision. As I presume the city attorney has explained to all of you, there are two types of elections in Oregon, binding and advisory. A binding election is one that is initiated by a legal mandate, while an advisory election has no such mandate. The fact that the council has treated this election as binding is a clear statement that there was a legal requirement for this election. I thank you all for finally acknowledging that requirement.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Seppi? Thank you, we appreciate it. There being no further discussion, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Murray?
Mayor, I'd like to approve a motion, or, a motion to approve Resolution 2017-3421, resolution accepting the canvas for votes for November 7, 2017, special election for Measure 36-190 related to the annexation of Twolton Valley Fire and Rescue District and certifying the results.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
I did not hear you, my apology. Counselor Johnson on the second, is there any further discussion? None appearing, do I hear a call for the question? Question's been called for, all in favor of adopting Resolution 2017-3421, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Resolution 2017-3421 is adopted. And with that, we move to Resolution 2017-3425. This is a resolution accepting the canvas of votes for the November 7, 2017, special election for Measure 36-91 related to a charter, city charter amendment and certifying the results. City Recorder?
Mr. Mayor, this is identical, not identical, but it is, the action taken will be identical to the other action. Certifying the results and the official results were received from Yamhill County on November 29th, and will be attached as the formal exhibit to the resolution.
Any questions or comments for the City Recorder at this time? None appearing, we have, Mr. Seppi would like to speak to us again on this one, so if you would come forward, Mr. Seppi?
Good evening. My name's Robert Seppi. I would first like to thank the city manager for his thorough answers during the work session regarding how the structural deficit is not a product of this measure. That's a critical point, and I certainly appreciate his explanation. I would like to again thank the council for having placed this matter on the recent ballot. I think that voters repeatedly made their positions clear, that the city should not continue to collect any of the tax revenue that has been used to fund fire services. The election results should make it very clear that the voters were not satisfied with the misleading statement made by the city, and repeated by TVFNR, that there was no intent to collect these funds. The addition of a 3% annual increase was not consistent with what your constituents had so clearly expressed. In fact, there were a number of voters who have claimed to have voted against the charter amendment, specifically because of the 3% increase. Nevertheless, the council has at least laid the groundwork for a complete tax limitation that follows the will of its constituents, and for that, I thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Seppi? Counselor Murray?
Just wanted to say thank you for all of the work that you put in to answering the questions with the community, a lot of explanation online, explaining both sides, and clearly getting to the point. You even created signs in the neighborhood, and you created a pamphlet that we could, that neighbors could have, so I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you and your family and friends put forth in getting the message out to this charter amendment.
You're very welcome, it was a group effort, and getting things factual was very important to me.
Well said, Counselor Murray, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Nothing, nobody else has come before, so the pleasure of the council on Resolution 2017-3425. Counselor Corey?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2017-3425.
It has been moved and seconded. Johnson on the second, to adopt Resolution 2017-3425. Is there any further discussion? None appearing, the question has been called for, all in favor of adopting of Resolution 2017-3425, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Resolution is adopted. 601. With that, we move into council business, and on council business, you have in your, in your packet, you have something? In your packet, you have the announcement for the December 18, 2017, at 2:00 PM, the ribbon-cutting that will be on the bypass. If you have any questions, why raise them now? I would encourage you all to be there, all are encouraged to come. It will be, it is being hosted by ODOT, and we will be featuring, or they will be featuring Governor Brown and the Director of ODOT, Matt Garrett. There will be other dignitaries that have indicated that they will be there, so I encourage you specifically look where it will be on the bypass. I do not know, at this juncture, the parking for the event will be on the bypass, and it will not be on the, on the gravel or anything, as you experienced when we had play the, play on the bypass earlier in the fall. It will be on the bypass, so stay tuned for specifics, but if you can possibly make that at 2:00 PM on December 18, that's a Monday, that's before we have council meetings, so do your homework beforehand. We will see you there. The second item on there is a report on TVFNR, and you heard Joe's earlier report on his meeting with the Washington County Board of Commissioners. We have not had a, an IGC, or an IGC intergovernmental council meeting subsequent to the, the election, so neither Counselor McGinnis nor I have anything to report on that at this time. The other, the two other things that I, one other thing that I have, is I want to remind those that I spoke to earlier, I'm going to use the roving gavel at the next meeting, and we have, Counselor McGinnis has one item, which is, you, did you write down what you're gonna be doing? On the roving gavel?
He said it would be in the packet.
What?
He said it would be in the packet.
Oh, okay, all right. I don't know that it's been identified, we don't identify who's doing it in the packet, so I'm, I guess maybe I need to tell you that it's the 1993 Northwest Newburgh Specific Plan Review.
Yes.
All right. Counselor Denise, the 1999 Springbrook Oaks Specific Plan Review. And, Counselor Essen is not here, but he will have the RCA to decide on housing Newburgh priorities. So those will be the roving gavel. Are you familiar with the roving gavel? This is where, and it's within our council rules, the mayor has the prerogative of handing off, and you, as a counselor, would facilitate a particular item on the agenda. So we call it the roving gavel. And, time will be coming, stay tuned. All right, okay. So those are the things, anything else on council business that you have right now?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that toy and joy is going on, and if you want...
Say what?
Toy and joy is going on now, and if you want to buy a present and drop it off, you have until December 18th to do that. Toys should be unwrapped and new, their greatest need is for newborns and teenagers. You can drop off at the fire hall on Sundays, there's another drop-off that I think is up there, I can't remember, the police department, and you can drop off at Crohn's Appliance anytime during the week. They are also looking for empty boxes to wrap things in, and if you want to, just leave those at City Hall for Jill Dorell in the mailroom, or you can bring them to Don, Karen, or I, and we will get the empty boxes to her, because they have to wrap all the toys. Okay?
Did you tell me earlier that you wanted to make that announcement?
No, I threw that in under TVFNR.
I didn't think you did.
It's under, under TVFNR.
Oh, that was under TVFNR, ah, okay. Thank you. Is there anything further in, under council business? Counsel Johnson?
I had one thing, and I, I just, tonight, at the break, and Matt Zook isn't here anymore, but, at the break, I asked Matt a question. I said, if we hadn't made a council goal, that five-year financial plan, would he have known that we were approaching this kind of structural deficiency? Obviously, the antenna, we probably would have known about, but it's the structural deficiency I was most interested in, because some of you will recall back, before I was on council, on Budget Committee, I asked some pretty serious questions about long-term financial health of the city, and, and the answer was, I don't have a model. Well, now Matt has a model. So I, I really wanted to thank the council, I wanted to thank staff, I wanted to thank the committee that, that worked on that. The way I kind of explained it to Matt is, now we see a hazard in the road before we get to it, and while the, the decisions we have to make are tough, at least we're not doing it inside of three months during the budget process, we, we got some time, and so, just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before us in council, council business? With that, then I am prepared to move us into executive session, and the, the council will be meeting in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660-sub2-subD, which allows the council to meet in ex-